For the city of Madison Heights, the date is July 25, 2016. The time is 7:30. Let's begin with the roll call, please.
Mayor Pretend Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Clark.
Present.
Councilman Corbett.
Present.
Councilwoman Giddings.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Saltus.
Here.
And Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise for an invocation led by Councilwoman Margine Scott and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, you have given us a great country founded on principles and truths from your word. We need men and women who will honor you, trust you, and lead us once again back to you. Give us leaders with discerning hearts, bold faith, and wise minds that model your character. Help us make wise decisions that move our city and our country in the right direction. Teach us to make our actions count and our words matter. Make us a great nation, but more than that, make us good Lord with a heartbeat that wants every person of every creed and color to know your love, your goodness, and your worth. Free us from divisiveness and melt our oftentimes hardened hearts to love, not hate, and to heal, not hurt. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, two, three, four, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. We begin tonight's meeting with the presentation of a condolence resolution to the family of Nancy Brown.
Whereas it was with profound sorrow that the Madison Heights mayor and city council learned of the passing of Nancy Brown, a 46-year city resident, homemaker, educator, and longtime civic volunteer on July 9, 2016. And whereas Nancy was the beloved wife of the late Alton L. Brown, with whom they have four beautiful children, Keith Brown, Chrissiane Young, Paul Brown, and Cindy Avery, along with 14 grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. Their children and great-grandchildren brought them many moments of pride, joy, and happiness throughout the years. And whereas Nancy was active in the local community and acted in the frantic capers benefit variety shows for Lambfair Schools, where she later worked as a preschool instructor. She was a charter member of the Madison Heights Intermediate Women's Club, joining the organization in 1977 and becoming an honorary lifetime member in 2014. And she was a member of the local Red Hat Society and Book Club. And whereas her tireless volunteer service to the city, including stints at the Madison Heights Public Library, the Madison Heights Nature Center, the Madison Heights Parade Committee, and the Madison Heights Senior Center, where she was recognized in 1998 for the Make a Difference Project. And whereas Nancy will be remembered as a devoted wife, caring mother, and a cherished
We are honored, and thank you once again for honoring her memory.
grandmother, who nurtured the intellectual and creative potential of her children and grandchildren, passing on her appreciation for books, music, politics, and community
Thank you very much.
involvement. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Madison Heights
We'll continue. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
do hereby extend the community's condolences to the family of Nancy Brown, and hope that
Hearing none.
the good and cheerfulness that she shared in her lifetime will comfort and console
We'll begin with business licenses initial. We have three applicants, A1, A2, A3.
them. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to her family as a
What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
token of our sympathy and as a lasting tribute of love and respect.
I'd make a motion to approve initial business license for number one, Annie's Nail,
Would anyone from the family like to accept this?
Thank you, Councilor.
a nail salon at 29068 Campbell, which is a change of ownership.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You presented that.
Yes.
Number two, City Pharmacy, a prescription drug shop at 26795 John R. Road. This is a new business to the city. Number three, Save-A-Lot, a retail grocery store at 27117 John R. Road. This is a change of ownership also, and they have just revamped the whole store.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Support, sir.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve the business licenses initial for applicants listed as A1, A2, A3. Is there any discussion?
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no.
All three carry. There are no other business licenses tonight. There are no public hearings tonight. So is there anything on tonight's agenda? Or reports on the agenda of interest to parties in the audience?
Hello, my name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Dartmouth. On the chair's resolution, everyone has to remember, this is taxpayer money, and taxpayer money needs to be spent for taxpayers' benefits. And when it's not spent on that, when taxpayers need that money, it will get noticed when it's missing.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I was asking if anyone would like to bring anything on the agenda up now instead of waiting. Do you want us to discuss that now, or were you just bleeding into public comment?
It's just public comment unless you want to do it now.
Well, let me ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like any issue on the agenda brought forward right now? Okay, Gloria, we'll open meeting to the public, and we'll accept your comments as just general meeting open to the public. Is that fair? Great. Anything else, Ms. Moore?
No, that's it for that one.
Okay, thank you. Well, the meeting is open to the public. If anyone would like to address any issue, you're free to come to the podium now. We ask that you direct your comments through me, the chair, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. It's entirely your option, but it would be helpful if you give your name and address. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I am citizens of the United States, and all corruptions show fearful of all facts, and no state shall make any law which shall abridge the privileges of the United States, nor should any state deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protections of laws. Amendment 14 of Constitution of the United States of America, staff of Madison Heights 43rd District Court violating this amendment in mines legal cases. Pontiac's police are conspirators. David Saltus, Brian Hartwell are racists. I am Peter Richard Taylor, and I am recording live on Monday, July 25, 2016. And I did hear Hartwell, you concur in David's saying of July 11, 2016, "United States black men murderers, nothing into in men." Do you want to say something now to me?
This is your opportunity to speak, sir. You have approximately 30 more seconds if you'd like to use that time.
And these are all unrecorded, including your racism and David's racism. And I do know about what happened in Florida this Monday before today, where a black person was shot while trying to help his patient, and he had his hands up. So, lack of a better word, it killed David's lie that a black person who had his hands up would not be murdered by white policemen.
Thank you, sir. You've exceeded your time. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting's open to the public.
Hello, it's a repeat. Gloria Moore at 27368 Dartmouth. First of all, I owe Brian an apology for diverting the subject of the glass lemonade conversation. And it did conclude that it'd be an excellent idea to have a meal together for everybody to bring their own ethnic dishes. And there's going to be, from what I understand, a town hall meeting August 18, Thursday, at Wilkinson, at, I believe, 5:30 to 7:00. And also, my organization, Friends of the Madison Heights Area Senior Citizens, two days before that, which is the third Tuesday on the 16th, at 7:00, will have a meeting at Wilkinson, and everybody is invited. Beverages and snacks are available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting's open to the public.
Hello, it's a repeat. Gloria Moore at 27368 Dartmouth. First of all, I owe Brian an apology for diverting the subject of the glass lemonade conversation. And it did conclude that it'd be an excellent idea to have a meal together for everybody to bring their own ethnic dishes. And there's going to be, from what I understand, a town hall meeting August 18, Thursday, at Wilkinson, at, I believe, 5:30 to 7:00. And also, my organization, Friends of the Madison Heights Area Senior Citizens, two days before that, which is the third Tuesday on the 16th, at 7:00, will have a meeting at Wilkinson, and everybody is invited. Beverages and snacks are available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting's open to the public. Please come now.
Hello, sir.
Hello, I'm Paul Sanders. I live at 26433 Rialto Street here in Madison Heights. Okay, I read the newspaper, get the Daily Tribune delivered. Yeah, I know, I'm kind of goofy. And we get the paper for Madison Heights. Approximately six months ago, they had a meeting down in Hazel Park, about I-75. After the meeting got going, and Congressman Levin said, "Does anybody else have anything to say?", I asked, "How are we going to pay for it, or who's going to pay for it?" Now we've come to the problem, from what I'm reading in the newspaper, how are we going to pay for it? Who's going to pay for it? And if we go ahead and pass the money for the city's repairs, is that going to bleed down because, got to have money? Is that going to take away from our residential repairs to pay for I-75s? According to the paper, that's $4 million. It's more money than I got. You guys might have it, but I don't. How are we going to pay for this? That's all.
That's a really fair question. If you don't mind, Mr. Sanders, I think I'd like to give our city manager an opportunity to address exactly that big question. That's the elephant in the room.
Your Honor, Mr. Sanders brings up a very good point. The millage renewal that's on the ballot for August 2 is a renewal of two mills that's dedicated for neighborhood roads only. It could not go toward the I-75 project. So, that question remains about funding. The state does give us very limited Act 51 funds, but as we've reported publicly and through our legislature and our legislative lobbyists, that project in sum would take over two and a half years of funding for I-75, and the first 800,000 of which would be due in 2018. So that money would be coming from major and local roads. It would not be coming from that millage. The millage cannot be used for that purpose. It's only for neighborhood roads. So we would have to budget and plan for that to the exclusion of other non-millage, commercial, and industrial road projects that we have to do. So, that 4.025 million that's been in the paper basically is spread out between now and 2026, I believe, but we have some serious decisions to make, and that's one of the reasons why council's being asked to approve the resolution tonight, so to seek a legislative override of the governor's veto to address this inequity. So, more to come.
You've got another minute or so, Mr. Sanders. Final thoughts?
Yeah, can you do something about the temperature outside? Just a wee bit more than a week. Could we share some of that with January or February? It'd be nice for the roads even around here. I just, I see that they're working on 11 Mile Road, and last I heard, the odd-numbered roads are our city's problem. Even numbered roads, 12, 14, that's a county. That's what you said once. I see they're working on 11 Mile Road. Thank you. That's nice. What I'm just wondering, how are we going to come up with the $4 million? I mean, we're just Madison Heights, and I know you said we're the city of tomorrow today. I asked people, they said most of us, the people that I talked to, said we're mad hicks. I'm not making it up. Or they said we're trash land because of what happened when they had the flood. So I'm not hicking on them, but just telling you, I did. I went out and I asked people. I'm goofy, I got time. But I'm just, it's $4 million. What are we going to take away with? We just barely gave our police and firemen, what, a one cent increase? 1%? What are we going to give up? And what are we going to do? And are we going to raise the taxes? And I know I'm bringing up something you really don't want to talk about, but we've got to do something. When I was a little kid, I watched, literally, my dad worked, served in World War II with Mr. Patton. Two of the men he served with, one of them lived right on, it used to be I-75, it's not anymore. They tore it out, and I watched as they were building it. It was two lanes each way. Now we're three, we're going to four. How are we going to pay for all this? That's all.
That's a good question.
I'm getting old. What's it going to do to the young folks?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
That's exactly why we're asking our legislature to continue to do the right thing. They unanimously, both chambers, Republican and Democrat, unanimously passed that legislation, and the governor vetoed it. So, we're pushing for the legislative override. If that can't happen, Mr. Sanders, I expect we would be pushing for reintroduction of legislation, new legislation next term, to do the right thing here and help the 45 cities out that are in this predicament because of the inequitable way that the state controls funding.
Is there anything Sandy Levin can do to help us?
Your Honor, I've just spoken with Congressman Levin's aide last week, made them apprised of the situation, but this is where the state of Michigan at this point. Although I did make the comment that any additional federal aid that could be applied to this project to lower the overall local match under these conditions would be a benefit to Madison Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. The meeting's still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council? Okay, I will close meeting open to the public. Next on the agenda, item C, communications. There are none tonight, but we do have three reports under item D. The first is D1, a report from the city manager, a resolution in opposition to the veto of Senate Bill 557. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. With council's indulgence, and as a segue from the last comment, I'd like to read the resolution, please. This is a resolution in opposition to veto of Senate Bill 557, whereas the Michigan Department of Transportation, or MDOT, proposes to widen and improve I-75 from Hazel Park to Auburn Hills, and whereas MDOT proposes to use the Public Act 51 road funding formula to require that Madison Heights pay an estimated local share of $4,025,000 for all three construction phases, with 800,000 required in 2018, 425,000 in 2024, and 2,800,000 in 2026. And whereas this local match would essentially eliminate the city's ability to provide road maintenance and reconstruction for more than two years, and whereas the city has repeatedly voiced opposition to MDOT's proposed change to the project phasing, as well as the use of Act 51 funding formula for road projects with regional, national, and even international significance and impact. And whereas the city has cited the lack of any public or municipal notice or opportunity for input regarding the change in project phasing, the extensive and widespread impact on the city's road network during construction with no compensation by MDOT, the recent I-75 service drive improvements made by the city based in major part on their previous project schedule, and the complete loss of future tax revenue from at least 25 total property takings and five partial property takings. And whereas by resolution on October 26, 2015, city council indicated their support for Michigan Senate Bill 557, a bipartisan bill introduced by Senator Nolenberg, which would eliminate Act 51 requirements for local share contributions on this and other MDOT trunkline projects. And whereas, the city has provided supportive testimony to both the Senate and House committees on transportation, both of which unanimously approved a recommended approval of the legislation. And whereas, the Michigan Senate and House unanimously approved Senate Bill 557 on May 31 and June 9, respectively. And whereas, on July 1, 2016, while admitting that the Act 51 requirement for local cost sharing places a hardship on those communities required to use most, if not all, of their available local road funding for interstate highway projects, Governor Snyder vetoed Senate Bill 557. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Madison Heights strongly objects to the governor's veto and urges a legislative override this year in order to alleviate the financial burden to local communities and restore some measure of equity to state highway funding in Michigan. Be it further resolved that the city clerk provide a copy of this resolution to U.S. Senators Stabenall and Peters, U.S. Representative Levin, Governor Snyder, State Representative Townsend, State Senator Nolenberg, State Senator Gregory, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, the Michigan Municipal League, and the additional 44 impacted cities.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council adopt the resolution in opposition to the veto of Senate Bill 557 as presented by the manager.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
Second.
Mr. Clark, seconded? Thank you. It was a motion by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Clark, to adopt the resolution in opposition of the governor's veto of Senate Bill 557 as presented by the city staff. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Just a comment to Mr. Sanders' question about where we're going to get it from, and this is just responding to what you guys said. It's going to come out of other expenditures. We're going to have to cut other places. We're going to have to float a bond and pay the bill, because, no, we don't have $4 million laying around now. Yeah, so that's how it's going to go, and that does directly take out of things like recreation, libraries so much, but recreation, water, sewer, all the different projects that we try to take on and help people out with. The money will come out of that, so, because, no, we haven't got it. And it really, you know, and the thing is, it was based on a model, the idea of, and the kind of executive mentioned this in his talk a few months ago, the model was back in the 1920s and 1930s, that's how they got roads to extend from the central city out here to the suburbs. And that was how, you know, we got developed, and we had roads in Woodward and them different mileroads. 13 Mile Road was one of the last, as I recall, I'll have to ask our historian for a little on that, but that was the last one to get developed. But that was all money where that was the method they did it. They said, "We'll split it with you. The locals will have to pay half, and then everybody else will pay half." But now, it really doesn't make sense, and as, there was an article I passed along to the council, I believe it was, I believe it was the financial director from Sterling Heights, made a comment that Madison Heights is paying, you know, is paying this huge burden, whereas other cities, Frazier and some other ones, I forget who he specifically named, that will be benefiting and not having to contribute at all. So, like I said, times have changed. It's not, it's, you know, the only developments are just not up to common thoroughfares. It's spread out, so. But anyway, thank you, sir, and appreciate the work of the administration and staff in getting this ready.
Good point. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is report D2 from the deputy city manager, a resolution approving a comprehensive financial plan.
Yes, Your Honor. As a requirement for the city's upcoming issuance of pension obligation bonds, the Michigan Department of Treasury requires the creation, council adoption, and publication of a comprehensive financial plan, or CFP, for pension and other post-employment benefits. The comprehensive financial plan provided to council has been reviewed by Treasury officials and incorporates their requested changes. Staff and I recommend approval of the adopting resolution as required by the Michigan Department of Treasury.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
I move for council to approve the adopting resolution as required by the Michigan Department of Treasury.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
I move for council to approve the adopting resolution as required by the Michigan Department of Treasury.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support, sir.
Thank you. Let's see, a motion made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve the adopting of the resolution as required by the Michigan Department of Treasury, which is the comprehensive financial plan. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is report D3 from the deputy city manager regarding MERS delegates and alternates.
City council is requested to appoint Amy Meachack and Melissa Marsh to serve as officer delegate and officer alternate, respectively, and to certify the employee's election of Justin Kowalski and Carolyn Howard as the employee delegate and employee alternate, respectively, to attend the 70th Annual MERS Meeting on September 28 and 29, 2016.
Thank you. What is the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I'd make a motion to appoint Amy Meachack and Melissa Marsh to serve as officer delegate and officer alternate, respectively, and to certify the employee's election of Justin Kowalski and Carolyn Howard as the employee delegate and employee alternate, respectively, to attend the 70th Annual MERS Meeting on September 28 and 29, 2016.
Thank you. What is the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I'd make a motion to appoint Amy Meachack and Melissa Marsh to serve as officer delegate and officer alternate, respectively, and to certify the employee's election of Justin Kowalski and Carolyn Howard as the employee delegate and employee alternate, respectively, to attend the 70th Annual MERS Meeting on September 28, 29 of 2016.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Saltus?
Second, please.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is E, items for future public hearings. There's nothing for our consideration tonight, so we'll continue to item F, bid awards and purchases. We have one from the DPS director. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. The fiscal 2017 budget includes $14,000 allocated for the replacement of chairs in the council chambers and conference room. These chairs include 12 high-back chairs in the chambers and 16 mid-back or task chairs in the conference room. They were originally purchased in 1998 and have reached the point where replacement is necessary. All the chairs, all the chairs are worn. Most do not function properly, and a small number have become a safety concern. If the purchase is approved by council, the few worn chairs that remain in acceptable working order would be rotated to the Madison Conference Room to replace those chairs which are older. Based on council's direction at the special meeting of April 20, staff have researched and obtained quotes for the item. These quotes were previously provided as part of the budget process. Based on the previously received quotes, staff and I recommend that council waive the formal bid process and approve the purchase of 28 chairs from the Office Supply Guys, formerly Michigan Corporate, per the quote in the amount of $10,150.
Thank you. Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
I understand both sides of the issue, but I'm going to make a motion that we not approve spending the $10,150 for just chairs for the chamber.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor, would that just be not a motion? Because the motion is to approve the bid, so would there just be no motion in that case?
Your Honor, I just gave a staff recommendation, not a motion for council to consider.
Yeah, there's no motion. So, since there's no motion, somebody would have to make a motion to allocate the money, correct?
Your Honor, no, the money has been appropriated in the fiscal 2016, 2017 budget.
Your Honor, if I might, the motion, you can word it any way, but it would basically be to simply not allocate the funds, retain them in the budget. So, I would think the motion is perfectly fine, the way you said. I think everybody understood, so.
All right. Well, I'll restate the motion and ask for a second again. A motion by Councilman Soltis to not approve the $10,150 allocation for chairs for council chambers?
Council chambers.
Okay, so I'm asking for a second for that. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Okay. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark, please.
Myself, I think we need the chairs. One of the main reasons is, Mr. Soltis has back problems. Councilwoman Scott is going in for back operation, and I've sat in some of these chairs, go to adjust them, and they fall right to the bottom. Tell me something, somebody isn't going to get hurt that has just had back surgery. So I can't justify not getting them.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
So, at the budget session, I found this line item and heavily debated it. I mean, I think we spent probably 20 minutes discussing this single line item at the budget session. I've subsequently spoken out against this line item several times and hope that we could reallocate this money. My big problem with this is, we're voting on replacing chairs that we're all currently sitting in right now. So, $10,000 of taxpayer money to change the chairs that we sat in before we came into the meeting and change the chairs that we're sitting in right now. Now, there are a few that do need to be replaced. I will absolutely concede that point. And could we have better chairs? Absolutely. These are 1998 models. You know, if you have a 1998 car, it's not running as well as the newer ones either. But my point in this is that they do work. We're sitting in them right now. We spend probably a total of five hours a month in this room with these chairs, which is a good portion of the expenditure. It's not very, not very long at all. We have other boards that meet in here, but they're meeting in here for two hours at a time. So it's not long to replace chairs that are in working enough order that we're sitting in right now. There are, we did our goal ranking not too long ago. On the goals list, and I have a copy here, I highlighted 20 or so line items on our goal sheet that we could accomplish any of them with this $10,000 budget expenditure. And that's not even taking into account the fact that we are right now, at this moment, asking our citizens to renew two millages that cost, on average, just over $70 per year. And we're here right now talking about spending $10,000 of taxpayer money on new chairs. So however, however the motion is worded, I think right now we're discussing not doing it. So I'm in the affirmative on that. I don't think that we should do it. And if there is an alternative motion to then adopt the chairs, I will vote against that as well, because I think it's, I don't think it's urgent. I think that this is something that we could tackle next year when we've had a chance to further understand the chairs. I think some of the chairs could be replaced in a smaller expenditure, only tackling the urgent needs chairs. I just don't see the need to replace this many chairs all at once with an expenditure of $10,000 of taxpayer money. It just doesn't, the math doesn't add up for me. The need is not as high as other needs that we might have for that money right now. And if that need ever grows, I'll be the first one to champion it. But right now, we're sitting in these chairs, they're working just fine. I don't think we should do it. And I'd urge my colleagues to vote in favor of not doing it, releasing these funds, and then we can debate about what to do with them at a future meeting. But I think right now, we shouldn't be spending $10,000 of taxpayer money on chairs. Just my two cents.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett, please.
I don't, I know that some of the chairs involved are broken and in need of repair. I'm not real strong on this one way or the other. I think we can go another year. I don't, I don't think we're in a big hurry. But I want to, but there's a point, I'll agree with the Pro Tem up to one point. Just because we didn't spend this money needs, means we have to spend it anywhere else. As far as I'm, you know, the, we adopted a budget, and it became effective not three weeks ago, and we said we were going to set aside this amount of money. So, and, and part of it was to go towards the chairs. Now, in doing our due diligence on behalf of the voters, the council may say, "Well, we don't think this is, should be spent tonight, that we should do it." That's fine, but we're not playing a shell game with the voters and the taxpayers, saying we're going to, we're not going to, you know, we don't think we should spend the money. I got a unique idea. How about we just don't spend it? And, and it's been allocated into the Office Supply Budget. If we don't think we need to spend it, then we don't spend it. But it did survive the first round. Other things did not. And so I'll vote to support the motion, because I think we can go another year, we can stretch this out. But that doesn't mean, in my opinion, that we play budget scavenger hunt now and start, and start reallocating the money. The money stays where it belongs with the taxpayers until there's a justification to spend it. And you do that in a process. You do that with public hearings, you do that when you adopt your budget, and when you do your goals. And everybody at this table, at different times over the course of the year, have said that people, "Come on out and hear us, we're going to talk about how to spend your money." So, that's just, but, yeah, but, but to where we all started with, yeah, I think we could probably go a year. I think we're going to have a, I think it's going to take some imagination in a few of the chairs in the back room. I get that. But, you know, I don't know. I sat in a room with mismatching chairs for a few years when I was starting out, so I suppose we can all survive a little longer. So, thank you, sir.
Good points. Thank you. Any other discussion from City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Yes, I had a call from a resident who I respect highly, and this person didn't think it was a good way to spend the taxpayers' money. And the more I look at this item and the email I saw go back and forth today, I think it'd be a good idea, as Councilman Corbett said, to maybe wait on this one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark, yes.
The only thing I have against that is, if we're pushing this for next year, you know, we're closer to the year that we're going to have to shell out part of that $4 million. Next year, if these chairs get worse and we really need them, where's that money going to come from?
That's an excellent point. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Yeah. I'm flattered by Councilman Clark considering my back, which is bad. But I only sit in this chair maybe two hours a week, if even that. The rest of the problems came from aging, getting older, and from sitting in incorrect chairs at my house. And I, I know that Dave Soltis and I have both been through back problems. But I do want to say that there are some issues that are pressing right now, that I consider them much more important, because the effect of safety of our residents and our police officers, and I know that that is under consideration to help the police department protect their safety and their station. And that, to me, I think, is much more important than any chair could ever be. I'm waiting to see how that works out. I hope it will be a benefit to them. And Mr. Sanders, of course, his input was very highly regarded, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And of course, we are thinking about that. I was contacted by several residents, also received two emails. So I like to listen to my residents, because there's a reason they're writing. They think something is so important that they want me to consider what their feelings are. And I am going to listen to them and applaud them for contacting me and the rest of the council. But I do want to say that I appreciate Councilman Clark's concern. I also appreciate the staff who investigated the chairs and did lower them down to the original price. So, but at this time, I think there's other things that are going to need our funds in a more immediate future.
Thanks. I had a question, if you, if you don't mind me interrupting, then I'll go to you, Mr. Soltis. I also received an email from residents interested in the issue. Some were against it, some had more open-ended questions. Others, a gentleman joining us tonight, James Reneri, who's a retiree from Detroit Water and Sewer, but he had an interesting question that I didn't know the answer to, is can, can Madison Heights support local businesses when we make expenditures like this?
Your Honor, we have to follow the city charter and the purchasing ordinance when we seek out the lowest responsible bidders or lowest responsible quotes. So those are the guidelines that we're obligated legally to follow. In this, in this case, however, the vendor, the quoted vendor is a local business. It's Michigan Corporate now, they're called the Office Supply Guys, but they've been on John R. for many years.
Okay. Mr. Soltis, I interrupted you.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Floor zers.
Councilman Clark, I really do appreciate the thought. I mean, you know, I do have back issues. But I'm really glad that Councilwoman Scott mentioned the police department and that security fence. I, I understand Councilman Corbett where he's saying them, but, you know, I don't necessarily agree with it. I think, I'll be honest, I would, in a heartbeat, use this money to provide the police department with a security fence. I mean, that's, that's just something I firmly believe in. And I think Councilwoman Scott is correct, that it's something that we can do to help protect our officers, that I could forego the chair and maybe get a, you know, lumbar support things or something. But those are just finer things that, minor inconveniences, for me at least, that I would, I'd be willing to sacrifice to help honor the police department. I mean, you can't, there's not one officer there that thinks it's a bad idea to put a fence up. Not one. So who am I to say, "No, I don't agree with you"? But let that be, that may come up in another session, but that's where I stand.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, let's not bleed into the next discussion. I'm glad you laid that down, but are there any more comments for this motion? This is the motion regarding the chairs.
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Just one thing to, I guess, provide context into what Councilman Corbett had addressed as to whether or not we spend the money. If, if any resident wants to play back the budget meeting when this was discussed, it was discussed and approved based on the concept that we would discuss this at a later date. That is what we all agreed to. So yes, it would require a formal, I think, some sort of amendment process that's going to require a supermajority if we want to take this money and reallocate it. But the entire intention all along was to have staff thoroughly vet it, see what number it came out to with the chairs, and then rediscuss this at a later date to see, is it worth banking the money? Should we put it towards other goals? Or are the chairs really that important? And, you know, it sounds, it sounds like several of my colleagues are agreeing with me that these chairs are not that important. But then that opens up that second discussion, which we absolutely should have. We adopted the budget based in part on the contingency that we would go back to this. I think that we owe it to our citizens to go back to this and debate whether or not we, you know, bank this $10,000, or if there's another priority that we should be spending. And so I definitely think that we should see that as an agenda line item in an upcoming meeting, so that way we can kind of put a cap on this, assuming, of course, that we do not purchase the chairs tonight.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this item? I really would like to keep it just to the discussion of the chairs, please. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, just so I can have a better handle of how the votes lie. But there was a staff recommendation for council to waive the formal bid process and approve the purchase of chairs. Council, by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Councilman Corbett. A motion was made to not approve the $10,150 allocation for chairs. Are we clear on that? So a yes vote would be to not approve the allocation.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sherman, please.
The motion on the floor doesn't relate to the allocation of the money. The motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to not approve the purchase of the chairs, period.
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't relate to what council approved as part of the budget session. It relates to whether or not council's going to proceed forward and purchase the chairs, or as indicated in the current motion on the floor, whether the motion not to approve the purchase of the chairs is acted on tonight.
Okay, let's clear that up, because I had written down the word allocation. Could you restate what you think the motion is?
I believe the motion to, the motion on the floor made by Councilman Soltis, supported by Councilman Corbett, is to not approve the purchase of the chairs. And for purposes of clarification, we're not just talking about the 12 chairs that are at this day, as we're talking about the executive conference room chairs as well. So we're talking about the purchase of 28 total chairs, and that's what's on the floor.
All right. So the motion is to not approve the purchase of the chairs. Is that correct, Mr. Soltis?
I thought that's what I said.
Okay, that's what you said.
That's how I understood it, sir.
Okay, great. Any other points of order on this?
Mr. Mayor?
So a yes vote will be to not approve the purchase of the chairs.
In my years of being on different boards, I thought that you couldn't make a negative motion. Is that true, Mr. Sherman? Or is this a difference?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sherman?
We, in this particular case, I would interpret it as a motion to deny the staff's recommendation to purchase the chairs. But when I frame, when the maker of the motion and the support agrees that the intent of the motion is to not purchase the chairs, it's an appropriate motion before, before the council. Completely contrary to what staff is recommending, and the motion is not to approve the purchase of the chairs, because this is not a bid. This is a, this is a sole vendor item, where staff has requested to waive the formal bid process and approve the purchase of the chairs with the, with the reduced amount from what was contained in the budget. So it doesn't relate to allocation, doesn't relate to budget, relates to whether this council wants to deny, wants to not approve or deny the purchase of the chairs.
Mr. Mayor, I'm for whatever prevents me from throwing myself in front of the next truck to go by, so. I'm with you. What's...
Mr. Mayor, just one quick clarification. So that also means that the, the money allocated goes back to the general fund?
It doesn't get spent. It's still allocated to...
Your Honor, the allocation remains the same. You're not, you're not altering the budget. You're not making a supplemental appropriation. That money stands as allocated, but you're not approving this purchase.
It stands allocated?
It stands in the budget. And if, if not, if not appropriated through a budget amendment or supplemental appropriation for another purchase, yes, it would go back to the general.
Are there any further points of clarification to be made from the City Council? Okay. We will do this by a roll call vote. Again, a yes vote is to not approve the purchase of the chairs. Clark? Take the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem, Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Egrugently, yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Amy Hurtwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. We'll continue. Thank you very much. Item G on the agenda, ordinances, nothing tonight. Item H, it's the same thing, there's nothing. For minutes, may the police have a motion to adopt the minutes from the regular City Council meeting of July 11, 2016?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 11, 2016 be adopted as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to adopt as printed the meeting minutes from July 11th, 2016. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda are appointments to city boards and commissions. Are there any nominations? Okay, I see there's a mayor's appointment. I'd like council to consider Mike Kapolka to the Planning Commission, a three-year term to expire August 2019.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
I move to confirm the mayor's nomination of Michael Kapolka for a term, three-year term, which will expire in August of 19.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this nomination? Okay. All in favor of appointing Mike Kapolka to a three-year term to the Planning Commission to expire in August 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Congratulations, he's in. Any other nominations tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
I see an appointment for Mr. Gerald's, to the Jeffrey Gerald's, who both, if it's okay, I guess, to reappoint him to both the Police and Fire Retirement Board and the Police and Fire Retiree Healthcare Benefits Boards, of terms to which happily run till August of 2020.
Very well. I'll accept a second on that double motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Second to motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sherman.
The only thing I would add is that our deputy city manager was nodding her head in the audience that Mr. Gerald's does want to continue to serve on both boards.
Oh, okay, good for him.
Great.
Lucky for him, we renominated him, sir.
Is there any further discussion on reappointing Jeffrey Gerald's to these two boards? All in favor of appointing Jeffrey Gerald's to a four-year term on the Police and Fire Retirement Board and the Police and Fire Retiree Healthcare Benefits Trust. It's a four-year term to expire August 2020. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. He's appointed to both. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. Next on the agenda is item I, executive session. There is not a session scheduled tonight, so before I adjourn the meeting, I invite city council members to make any closing comments. Mr. Corbett?
Just one quick item in passing to mention that we finally were able to sell that property on 13 Mile Road, the oldest home in not only Madison Heights, but most of Michigan. Took a while, but it was done. And I'm pleased to report that the couple who purchased it have indicated that they desire to retain its character and are going to try and redevelop it, rehab it as closely as they can to, it's not clear to me which year, but which century, but at least somewhere back to its original charm. And they've graciously indicated that they will keep the historical commission in mind in documenting and providing photos and so on of the restoration project. So congratulations to all involved. And thank you to Mr., pardon me, thank you to Mrs. Collette, or Mrs. Keeler, as you might know her, and her family. They were, you know, good stewards of the property and really nice people, so thank you, sir. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protemblis?
Yes, Your Honor. First, I'd like to talk about bathrooms. We've, we just delivered the family restrooms to the parks, so the porta-potties are now in the parks, Huffman, Monroe, and then two at Rosie's. It's a two-month trial period, it's a test to be able to make sure that the usage is there. I've heard from multiple residents who are thankful and really excited that they are there. One family that we ran into, as my family was at the park, actually told us that they were able to stay twice as long at the park because the restroom was available. And so for families with young children, and even a couple of seniors who had mentioned being able to walk the park and spend time in the park now when they otherwise wouldn't have, the citizens that I've run into have been pretty appreciative about it. And so I urge my colleagues to, and I never thought I'd say this, but I urge you to check out the restrooms in the parks. They're really nice. Part of our contract has them serviced by the company that we're renting them from. It may not be a true long-term solution, but it allows us to gauge the need of restrooms in the parks. And thus far, it seems, at least for the summer months, when there is an uptick in attendance, it seems like it's a valuable expenditure. So I'm really excited about that, and I thank all my colleagues for their support in pushing that through. Second, I wanted to give an update on Pokemon. Yeah, I see, I'm starting off bathrooms and Pokemon Go. It's a very interesting meeting for me. At the last meeting, I threw out the idea for us to run basically a citywide block party tied to the popularity of the game Pokemon Go. That's bringing different generations together. Just today, I've probably spoken with five different generations who are playing the game, from Councilman Soltis's son, sitting in the audience, who's playing the game, all the way up to a couple of seniors who are outside, walking with their smartphones. And it's really interesting, I mean, particularly in our city, where a good percentage of our stops in the game are parks and city buildings. And so it's bringing attention to underutilized parks that some people never knew existed, that, you know, residents who are newer to our city are seeing some of the public art we have, you know, the plaques and memorials that we have, and frankly, the buildings and amazing parks that we have in our city. And so staff acted really quickly, and I want to commend them. Immediately after the meeting, there were a couple of meetings on the books that were staff meetings. They identified how much staff resources could be put into an event, what we might be able to accomplish. And then we came up with the concept that we would basically adopt out our parks to all of the great and amazing community service organizations we have in our city. Anybody who wanted to adopt one of these parks would have the opportunity to do so. And, you know, it's tentative right now, but we should be confirming the date in the next couple of days. Tentatively, on August 11th, from 5:30 to 9 o'clock, it's a Thursday night, we're going to open up the city, do a complete citywide block party, where all of our amazing organizations are going to be running programming at the parks, they're going to have food and beverages for sale, and it's just going to be a great time for our citizens to get together and enjoy each other's company. Whether or not you play Pokemon Go, that's going to be secondary, but if you're interested in learning, we'll have somebody at every park to show you how to do it. So it's going to be a great time. I want to commend staff for their support on it. I want to commend Mayor Hartwell for reaching out to a handful of groups personally and bringing them into the loop and, you know, helping me put this together on what's kind of short notice, because we want to capitalize on the fact that everybody's playing it right now. So all in all, really, really good job by staff, and I really can't wait to see what it looks like at the next meeting. We'll have very formal information for everybody at home, but tentatively planned, the night of August 11th, and we'll make sure it's up on the website and on our social media pages in the next couple of days, as we finalize which groups are running what parks, what programming that they're going to have, and, you know, just really all the information that we can put out there. So should be a good time for all. Last but not least, the DDA City Town Hall meeting is scheduled for August 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30. That, I'd like for our residents to get that on their schedules, as many that can come out. This process, you know, these open meetings really only work if our citizens come up and give their input. Now, you can do it privately, we can read emails into the record, we can distribute them among staff if you can't make it. But if you could be there that night, it'd be great to hear your thoughts for what we can do for the downtown of Madison Heights. And as a reminder, I did ask staff if we can make sure that that is recorded for those who cannot make it, so that way we can put it up on our YouTube channel and have transparency into everything that was said in that meeting. I do believe that that's on the docket, but if it's not finalized, I'd like to ask staff to make sure that that is finalized, so that way we can tell those residents who can't make it and don't have access to the city's cable channels, because they either don't have cable or don't have the two providers that do Air City programming, that we'll have that meeting available for them afterwards. That's it, Your Honor.
Your Honor, I would ask for council's direction overall with regard to televising the DDA Town Hall meeting from the remote site, since it is a change in our practice.
Mr. Geddings, we'll continue with you, closing comments?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sherman?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention that for those viewers at home and for people who may watch a rebroadcast online, there were many members of Nancy Brown's family sitting in the council chambers. And they really, sitting from this vantage point, you could tell that they really appreciated the condolence resolution that council passed, you know, for someone who was so involved in our community for many decades, as was her late husband, Alton Brown, also. And yesterday, my dad, my brother and I attended a beautiful tribute for Lois Clark, and got to meet many of Lois's family and Rich's family. And the family, I think it was Rich's daughter, put together a beautiful video, which had some incredible pictures of the family, including the young and dashing Councilman Richard Clark in his youth. And it was a beautiful tribute, and I know that, you know, that Lois would be smiling down on us after yesterday.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor, just two quick things. Our annual city golf outing is coming up on Friday, August 5th. If you're interested, contact the DPS by August 2nd to register, and their phone number's And also, I would remind all residents that Tuesday, August 2nd, is the election, and remember to vote. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Prince?
Well, speaking of the election, applications are still available for an absentee ballot through the city clerk's office, or you can also get an application online. The last day to apply for an absentee ballot by mail is 2:00 p.m. this Saturday, July 30th. Just a reminder to our voters that this is a state primary election that will be held on Tuesday, August 2nd, and it will be held in all voting locations in the city. This is a primary election, and as such, you may either vote the Republican or Democratic portion of the ballot, along with the proposals. And if you vote for both parties, you would spoil that portion of your ballot. So please remember that you can only vote Democratic or Republican on the partisan portion of the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, I too would like to thank the family that lived at the house at 1560 Elmhurst, East 13 Mile Road and Elmhurst, for caring for it for probably 20 years or more, for keeping it historical as much as they could. I also want to thank Councilman Corbett for taking the listing and the sale under his jurisdiction, for guiding them the way that we wanted it, for making sure that the buyers, which is a dream come true, that they will honor the memory and the historical value of that home. So I applaud everybody who was connected to that. That home was built in 1843, before we were ever even a state. And thank you for doing the title search, by the way, for us, too, so we could prove the age of that house. That was really a triumph, I think, not only for our community, but for her historical commission. And I know we intend to work with them as much as we can and applaud them for keeping that historical integrity. And regarding Lois, it was a party that she would have loved to be at, and I appreciate her family honoring her memory. And I also want to comment about the fact that last weekend, my dear grandson graduated from high school, we held his graduation party. Originally, we had the pavilion rented, and you know how hot it was. Well, we kept the pavilion open and had gatherings there, but luckily, I was able, at the last minute, to use the fire station meeting room for our cooling off and our pleasure, and so we could enjoy ourselves and honor my grandson. And we all thank them. Thank goodness for the city for having that room available to the citizens, and I appreciate that. And also, yes, I will be, Councilman, Rich Clark mentioned that I will be going in for back surgery on Wednesday. I don't want anybody to worry about me, but I know your prayers will be valued and very needed. Your thoughts and your kind wishes are going to be needed. I intend to recuperate as soon as possible. I will always keep my computer open and my ear open to whatever's going on here. So please know that you can still email me at any time and let me know how you feel about items, and I will be back here as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Scott's right, she'll be returning those emails regardless.
Yes.
And I hope all goes well. I went through something similar, not quite the same, but...
Right.
First, the crime mapping is going to be, I think, presented next week. The chief, I'm looking forward to his presentation. That looks like great software. Oh, also, we got these great mugs, Madison Heights Police Department. We're right there. In recent news relating to the security fence, and I think the need, this is in the paper, a nearby city authority says, say that seized, a person seized a dozen rifles and six handguns from the home of suburban Detroit man who allegedly mentioned during a mental health group discussion that he wanted to kill police officers. Number two, another very close city, the police department issued an alert area law enforcement agency warning about an unconfirmed tip regarding a plot to assault and kill officers on the 8 Mile Woodward area. The warning also said that Hazel Park Police Department had an officer baiting in which black Chrysler four-door occupied, four black males, possibly with New Jersey plates, attempted to draw officers' attention by slowing traffic near stops, squealing tires, and speeding away. Occurred multiple times in the area 8 Mile and John R. Also, I'd like to, on a different note, I'd like to see if we could put the emergency food pantry agenda on the next session, if that's possible, so we can vote on that to move it forward. I think we read Joe's report very thorough. I hope everyone gets a chance to read it, and I think I'd like to vote on it if we And didn't we pass an ordinance before that about public comments that are disparaging in nature? Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I think we have a council rule that deals with that, that when the meeting is open to the public and the public is given three minutes to come up and speak, and they can talk about whatever they'd like, but that personal attacks on council, inappropriate comments, name-calling, vulgar language, things of that sort, are prohibited by council rule.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. Excuse me, sir, it's my turn to speak now. I let you speak, so I can speak. I think we need to really enforce that. I think the last time was when this particular person spoke the last time, a year ago or so, and called me certain comments then, different ones, homophobic ones, but nonetheless, rude comments. And I think we need to really put a stop to that, because it's just, it's inappropriate. I mean, I can't, I'm not going to sit here and just listen to that, you know, that garbage go out in front, and then, you know, in front of my own, in front of my own child, and I just think that it's rude, and you just need to find something else to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I will review the rules. It is important that we are able to proceed with our business in a safe environment, however, at all times respecting opinions and comments of others. But thank you for bringing that to my attention. I do agree with Councilman Soltis's request to see, to get some sort of vote, to see some sort of recommendation at the next agenda regarding the food pantry concept. I do want to thank Mayor Protemblis for taking it into his own hands to try to put together some sort of citywide event cheaply and quickly, and I think there will be a lot of fun and just neighborly, innocent, fun times ahead, so thanks for taking that initiative. of fun and just neighborly, innocent, fun times, and so thanks for taking that initiative. I encourage everyone to vote, and let's see, is there any other further business before the city council? Since there is none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.